Call to order, the school board meeting of St. Lucy County, our regular meeting Tuesday, October thirteenth in the year 2020. Warm words of welcome to everyone, whether you're joining us in the audience tonight, or whether you're joining us via TV or livestream. It's good to have you all with us. If you would please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our treasure hunter pledge? As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and that exist in all children and youth. All children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you, you may be seated. Our first order of business is a public hearing on proposed adoption of new and amended school board policies. Are there any in the audience that wish to address the amendments or proposals that are before us tonight? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Check.
I got it. Sorry for the suspense. I recommend the board adopt the proposed new and amended policies and job descriptions and rules as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board members, we have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Dr. Mills, a second. Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. Any conversation? All in favor? Miss motion carries five zero. I do need to just put into the record that Mr. Ingersoll is not physically with us tonight, but he is here on the phone. He is one of the coaches for the, one of the girls volleyball teams, and they are at a championship tonight. So, welcome aboard, Mr. Ingersoll, hope you can hear us okay.
Good.
Good. Okay, we now move to our special orders of business. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three special orders of business tonight, and the first one is, I'm gonna go out of, I think I'll just go out of order with the board's permission here, and do a recognition from our donation, then we'll do our star presentation, and then we'll, I'm gonna have Dr. Prince do a special presentation on an equity report. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Martin.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Jent. At this time, I'd like to invite Joey Gambina to come forward. Joey is the owner of Tudo Fresco, and he has been a longtime supporter of our school district. Most recently, he donated $1,000 in gift cards to help us recognize our National Principals' Month, and we are able to share those with our principals, and they were very, very appreciative when they received those this week. So, in recognition of your donation, we'd like to present you with this plaque, and we appreciate all of your support. Thank you so much. So, I'm gonna have you come right up here.
Yeah, we can work, sure.
Can I say something? I want to be able to collect a couple weeks, I'll wait for everybody to show board.
Yes, open for lunch. Everybody, if you see any questions.
Yes. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate that. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we are moving on with our star awards for the month of October. We're very pleased to be able to reinstate our recognition of our superstar employees. And what we will be doing is recognizing them here at the board meeting, and in the coming days, Mr. Jent will visit them at their work site to present them with their certificate and their star pin. So first, we'd like to recognize two of our employees from right here in the district office, Lori Boyer, who is recruitment and outreach specialist for Magnet Schools, and Elizabeth Pruitt, who are the coordinator of curriculum. They were nominated by one of our principals at Fairlan. Both Lori and Liz have provided exceptional and ongoing support for virtual learning. Their easygoing nature and expertise in the area of technology are much appreciated at Fairlan and across the district. So, congratulations and thank you. And I think Liz is here in the audience tonight. Thank you. Next, we have Norma O'Quendo. She is the custodial plant manager at C.A. Moore Elementary. She was nominated by Bab Massa, who was our building code administrator. Throughout his day, Mr. Massa visits many of our schools, and he wanted to point out that under the, under her leadership, C.A. Moore has never looked better. More specifically, he mentioned the sparkle in the tile floors across their campus. And she has done some amazing things to bring the carpeting back to life. Her hard work and dedication does not go unnoticed at C.A. Moore, so congratulations and thank you. Next, we have a few bus drivers. The first is Ron Sealy. He was nominated by a parent at Village Green Elementary. He has been driving her son to Village Green for the past four years. She appreciates the kindness and compassion that Mr. Sealy has exhibited towards her daughter. She states that he goes above and beyond just driving the bus and keeps all of the kids safe. She makes a difference every day when transporting kids to and from school. Next, we have Pamela Hayes, who is also a bus driver and was nominated by the assistant principal, Elizabeth Gomez, at Lakewood Park Elementary. She states that Ms. Hayes is always kind and helpful to not only the students, but the staff in Lakewood Park as well. She certainly goes above and beyond to ensure all students get to and from school safely on a friendly bus ride. And finally, from here at the district office, Wanda Davis, who is a technical support specialist. She was nominated by a school assessment coordinator from Southport, Patricia Hockey. Southport Middle School is so pleased to have Ms. Davis assigned to their school. She is not only knowledgeable and professional, but also very helpful and friendly. When Wanda's on campus, she is constantly stopped and asks questions about technology problems. She handles these with such patience and grace, and Southport Middle School is blessed to have her working with her, and we are happy to have her working with our district. So, congratulations to these star recipients, and we look forward to visiting their school sites in the coming days.
Let's do a round of applause. It's really tough in this environment to not be able to see them in person and congratulate them in person, but to all of you that received those awards, please know how proud of you we are, and thank you profusely for the job you do for St. Lucy Public Schools.
Madam Chair, next presentation, I'm gonna ask Dr. Prince to come on up. And at our workshop two weeks ago, Mr. Ingersoll had mentioned the, is this on? Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Ingersoll had mentioned the equity report, and there's some really, it's a, it's an annual report that must be sent to the Department of Education every year, and, you know, there's some really good things in there. So, I asked Dr. Prince if he would just make a brief presentation to the board for some of the highlights that are in the equity report. You have a handout in front of you, as well as it'll be put up on the screens as well for the, for the audience that's here this evening. Dr. Prince?
Thank you, Superintendent Jent, Madam Chair, board members, and also Ms. Hilsen. Just wanted to say to you, thank you, it's been a pleasure. I know we have one more board meeting and a board workshop, but it's been an absolute pleasure having you serve on our school board. So, this is a report that we do every year to the Office of Equal Education Opportunity. And basically, what it shows is the progress that we're making with underrepresented minorities in upper level courses. So, I'm just gonna take you through a couple of slides, because I think it really paints a real positive picture of the work that we're doing in our school system right now. So, with our student participation, we're looking at algebra enrollment, our career and technical education participation, and then grades nine through twelve, AP, IB, and ACE, and then all of our honors classes. If your student is taking, you know, marine biology honors, all of our honors classes, along with all of those college level courses, and dual enrollment. Now, what's the philosophy behind it? Is our breakdown is basically a third, a third, a third. A third black students, a third white students, and a third Hispanic students. And what you want in an ideal world is equal representation with your black students, your white students, and your Hispanic students. Historically speaking, our courses statewide have been underrepresented, particularly with black males and also Hispanic males. So, when you see the report, it's really gonna focus on that comparison, because that's what the state sees as underrepresented. So, I've got a couple of graphs to share with you, and I just wanted to kind of explain the work. The superintendent, this is his sixth year, and in conjunction with that, this is my sixth year. When we first arrived, a lot of our work centered on graduation rate. Our graduation rate was seventy-five percent, and it was really about laying a foundation of high expectations. I also want to thank Dr. Wild's office in teaching and learning, because they work and coordinate a lot of these efforts with regards to providing opportunities in these courses for our students. But I want you to take a look for algebra enrollment. Year two of Mr. Jent's superintendency with our algebra enrollment. Literally, in one year, we doubled the number of students that are enrolled in algebra. And why is algebra so important? Because it's a pathway to college for middle school students. Particularly with our black students and black males, we almost doubled the enrollment. But we, we really moved the bar across the aisle with regards to our algebra, excuse me, our algebra enrollment. And we substantially increased the opportunities for these students. In just a minute, I'm gonna show you another slide where you can see that start to bear fruit when those algebra students started going to high school. Okay, what happened with our high school enrollments? Because it provided an opportunity across the board. Some of our strategies, I just wanted to hit this, and I'm not gonna read the whole slide to you, but it's really about equity and access. Providing access to those students and creating a mind shift in philosophy with our school district administrators and teachers with regards to, instead of back when we all went to high school, we had a course, a course registration sheet. And you remember on the course registration sheet, you'd pick what classes you wanted. Well, many of our students that have a lot of ability were really underrepresenting themselves and not enrolling themselves in upper level courses. And if you don't have sometimes parents from no fault of their own, or working three jobs, if they're not advocating for their students, then our school administrators and our school guidance counselors and our school teachers have to advocate for those students. So, we started moving those students and challenging those students and putting them in upper level courses. And that was one of, one of the biggest strategies that we had. The same thing with career and technical education. There's two pathways to the future that our students have. One is school to college, and the other is school to workforce. Once again, you'll see year two, a huge increase in the number of our students, particularly our minority students, that were taking career and technical education courses. And not only were they enrolling in those classes, but they were having a substantial amount of success. I'm just very, very pleased with the numbers, especially the work from Dr. Wild's office with regards to the strategies that we employed to get those students in. So, career and technical education, this is something that's really impressive. Right now, our senior class, the 2021 graduates, my son is included in one of those, ninety-one percent of our seniors are enrolled in either a career and technical education class or a class that's gonna earn them college credit. And across the board, once again, we've increased our opportunities for our students, particularly our students of color. And I'm not gonna read you the strategies, you can see those. But I'm very excited, if you look over the last five years, our enrollments in AP, IB, and ACE. Okay, we have a number of opportunities, and this is what you wanna see. Remember I said you, you wanna see equal representation between your black, your white, and Hispanic students? If you look at the breakdown after year five, you'll see that our students are pretty equally representative, representative in our college level course opportunities and enrollment, regardless of their race. So, this is some great work, and also just really high expectations for our students. And the students are not only enrolling, once again, they are being successful, and we are supporting those students in those classes. Once again, it's across the board, you see big increases with our students, and almost a third of our black students, our white students, and our Hispanic students are taking a course that is gonna earn them college credit. Very proud of that. Once again, strategies, equity and access, providing opportunities to our students, and also a culture of high expectations. If you expect great things as students, the students will do great things. Lastly, the level three courses, AP, honors, IB, dual enrollment. Once again, you see a pretty adequate representation of our students, regardless of color, our black students, our white students, and our Hispanic students. In fact, over sixty percent, for the most part, of our students are taking an honors level course in our high schools right now, which is really impressive. I can say from being in very large urban districts, you know, coming from Palm Beach and Orange County, this is really fantastic work that the team has done, really changing the mindset over the last six years. Last is dual enrollment. Dual enrollment has been just, it's still trending in the right direction, but it's flattened a little bit, and the reason it's flattened is because so many of our students are taking AP, IB, and ACE classes. Just like my son has chosen to try to earn an ACE, an ACE diploma, he's only taking one dual enrollment, but he's taking five ACE courses, because he wants that ACE diploma. And I appreciate the board for showing faith in us, because it's provided him opportunity as well. And lastly, I wanted to hit the graduation rate. And that's the last slide. Once again, we are going to enter our fourth year with our graduation rate in our district exceeding ninety percent. And just, you know, six years ago, it was seventy-five percent, then increased in a year to eighty-six percent. Now, we're four years running, we'll have one of the highest graduation rates in the state. And that's not, that's for all students, black, white, Hispanic, all those, all those groups exceeding ninety percent. So, extremely proud of our work. So, with that being said, I wanted to thank the board, and we're gonna have another great year.
So, with that last slide that's up there, when we, these are our anticipated rates, so this is based on our best data, and it won't come out from the state for another couple of months. Usually, it comes out right around sometime in December before the winter break. But if we take our six traditional high schools, and you take those numbers, from our six traditional high schools, our graduation rate's gonna be right around ninety-eight percent for last year. And then you can see, and there at least all of our other schools, some of our alternative programs and special programs for our students that have different unique needs, and this is gonna help meet their needs as well to get them across that finish line. So, it's a great story to tell. I appreciate Mr. Ingersoll bringing that up, because a lot of times, we see it all the time in staff, and we don't really toot, toot the horn too much, but I think it was important to, to spread that, that word and to share that with the board members and those in the audience and those that are watching on television. So, it's a, a good story to tell about, there's one thing about equality, but equity's the issue, and we have to continue. We can't be satisfied with where we are whatsoever to continue to do that and stress that with our school, with our, with our teachers. Dr. Prince talked about filling out those forms and, you know, with students register. We, we want an adult, we wanna make sure there's an adult advocating for every child on campus, and so we wanna make sure that the administration, the counselors are reviewing each one of those, to make sure that we're pushing our students. Because sometimes, if you leave it up to kids, some are high achievers and some will take the easy route. But we wanna push them, we wanna have rigor, we wanna have relevance in the program, and so we're pleased with what our school centers do. So, it really is a, a team effort with the parents, caregivers, school staffs, and then working with the students to push them into a belief system that, yes, I can achieve at higher levels, and I'm gonna be able to do that. So, I appreciate you letting me do this tonight for the entire board, and that really completes our presentation for the special orders of business.
Sure, Dr. Mills?
I noticed that with the black male students, they, they're not, still not achieving as high as, and I think I'm gonna ask you a question, Dr. Prince, still are not achieving as high as the other groups.
That's right.
And then I look at the dual enrollment, and I see that they've gone down.
Well, just remember that we have a lot more black students that are in AP, IB, and ACE programs, and sometimes that is a more challenging venue for those students to take those courses than dual enrollment. The bottom line is, we're not at our destination, just like the superintendent said. You know, our goal is to make sure that we are equitable across the board and that we have equal representation, but I just wanted to share with the board that we've made great strides over the last five and a half years.
And you have, you definitely have, but like you said, we've got a long ways to go.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Madam Chair, just, Dr. Prince, this is so important. This information is, it is about the equity piece, but it's also so important to get this out to parents to understand if they've priced college.
Yeah. I'm pricing it now.
Yeah. Had my daughter, my youngest daughter not done AP and dual enrollment, it really would have been out of reach, because I was a single parent. And I really wasn't even aware at the time, with my older daughters, there wasn't as much of this going on when they were in high school. But if we could get anything out to parents to tell them, the rigor is, is so important, because colleges are picking and choosing. And even if students don't wanna go to college, if they wanna go into vocational, technical, whatever, having these courses behind them is, and again, we have to advocate, to have the parents advocate for their children, because this, this is one of the most important pieces. I spend a lot of time talking to parents about different programs we have in our schools. They're not aware of all the vocational type programs we have and how, and what's available to them.
Well, to your point, when we first, when we really hit the work hard four years ago, and we've started putting a lot more students into these upper level and honors courses, initially, some of the parents pushed back, and, but we don't get that anymore. I mean, it's, I really feel like the superintendent and you, to, for an extension, really have high expectations, and I think that our community has high expectations for our high schools. And I agree with you, you know, the, the work is not done, as Dr. Mills said, but we still can message and get the word out that college is an expensive endeavor, and as a father of a senior right now, I completely understand that. But I know that my son, just like the children of, of our entire community, they appreciate the opportunity to take these college level classes to get college credit in high school, so that it makes that college experience that much more affordable.
One, one other point if I may, because I know we're talking about college and preparedness for college, but as, you know, we know that not all students are gonna go to college, and we know many are gonna go into a skilled, into a career that was mentioned. Our industry certifications, where the students can leave high school and go into the world of work, not at entry level, but at a higher level rate of pay when certifications is off the charts as well, we didn't include that in here. We're measured on it by the state, but we have one of the highest increases in the state of Florida for industry certifications, and we work very closely with community organizations, the Economic Development Council, the Career Source, and, and through our schools and through the curriculum department, with, you know, going out on tours, going on field trips with our, with our counselors to show students the opportunities for them, for high paid, paying jobs right here in St. Lucy County to stay and remain home. So, what we're trying to do is take care of everybody, whether you're gonna go to college, or whether you're gonna go directly into the field of work, or whether you're gonna go into the military and serve the country with military service, trying to have a pathway for every student that's involved. And so, you know, very pleased and very proud of what we've been able to accomplish with the board's support. And again, it's a work in progress, but it's a, it's a great story to tell. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prince, for a good report. It's always a good to see that there's been a, an upward climb. Move now to our reports. I don't believe there's anyone here from ESAL to report, but Mr. Freeland did call me earlier today to let me know that he had a tooth that was really bothering him, an exposed nerve on that tooth, so he wasn't going to come and try to risk anything with that tonight, but he did want to, for everyone to be aware that were it not for that, he would be here. There are strong presence in our negotiating team, and we appreciate their, their presence whenever they are able to be here, which, other than tonight, is just about every, every month. So, we wish you well, Mr. Freeland, and hope that your oral issues are resolved quickly and easily. Anyone here from CWA? Okay, seeing none there. We, board members, will move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Will.
Thank you. I had several motions, how about a second? Thank you, Dr. Mills. Any conversation? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted with the deletion of item number eleven point two, the JROTC job description.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Before I entertain a motion, are there any items board members might want pulled for separate vote or discussion? Seeing none. We have received the recommendation of the superintendent. Have a motion on that recommendation, please? Thank you, Ms. Hilsen, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hensley. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion again carries five zero. Move along to our superintendent and staff reports. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. A few things tonight. Number one, and this is, this is great news, because if you, if you look at Lucy Links, and I wanna thank Lydia and the communications department, we're highlighting the positive things that are going on at school. So, even though we're in the midst of a pandemic, and even though you've got the data on students that are my school students or, or brick and mortar, we have a lot of positive things happening in the school, and we don't wanna lose sight of that. So, encourage folks to look at Lucy Links, I appreciate what Ms. Martin has been able to do. Last week, we received a grant of almost $500,000 from the United States Department of Justice for the Stop School Violence Grant. So, I wanna commend Brian Ruther and his team, and our grant writer in Helen's department. That's a big deal, half a million dollars for that, and this will fund what's called Helping Every Adolescent Recover From Trauma Project, or we call it, the acronyms are the HART Project. And it's an approach to providing trauma responsive environment in two alternative education settings, serving our students who have experienced trauma as a result of either witnessing or being a victim of violence, and requiring some kind of an alternative school setting. So, this, through the, through this award, we're gonna be able to have intensive support through some, what's called sixth behavior, cognitive behavioral techniques to regulate emotions, react to trauma, and over a sixteen week therapeutic program. So, this is really a big deal. So, I wanna commend both departments for what they're able to do there. Secondly, this is, we had our comprehensive mental health plan that each year, we have to submit that to the state DOE, and I know Bill's got some of his department members that are here tonight, but that was approved. We, we received approval from the DOE, so that we can now access the fund from the mental health allocation. What the plan is, it's a comprehensive overview of established infrastructure designed to address the, the total child, the mental, the social, and the, and the behavioral needs of our children, and this, the mental health service allocation and the dollars from our voter approved voter referendum allow us to expand these services for their, for our students. And if they're ever needed, now is the day that they're needed. Thirdly, the first two weeks of October is Florida Disability and History Awareness Weeks, Week, and I wanted to read this. "One out of every five Americans is a person with a disability. A person may be born with a disability, may acquire a disability..."
And this will fund what's called Helping Every Adolescent Recover From Trauma Project, or we call it, the acronyms are the HART Project. And it's an approach to providing trauma responsive environment in two alternative education settings, serving our students who have experienced trauma as a result of either witnessing or being a victim of violence and requiring some kind of an alternative school setting. So this, through the, through this award, we're going to be able to have intensive support through some, what's called sixth behavior, cognitive behavioral techniques to regulate emotions, react to trauma, and over a 16-week therapeutic program. So this is really a big deal. So I want to commend both departments for what they're able to do there. Secondly, this is, we had our comprehensive mental health plan that each year we have to submit that to the state DOE. And I know Bill's got some of his department members that are here tonight, but that was approved. We, we received approval from the DOE so that we can now access the front from the mental health allocation. What the plan is, it's a comprehensive overview of established infrastructure designed to address the, the total child, the mental, the social, and the, and the behavioral needs of our children. And this, the mental health service allocation and the dollars from our voter approved voter referendum allow us to expand these services for their, for our students. And if they're ever needed, now is the day that they're needed. Thirdly, the first two weeks of October is Florida Disability and History Awareness Weeks, Week. And I wanted to read this, "One out of every five Americans is a person with a disability. A person may be born with a disability, may acquire a disability through an accident or illness, or may acquire a disability as a result of growing older. And although disabilities are a natural part of life, people with disabilities have not always had access to equal opportunities. In 1975, the act was, an act was passed, we now call it the, the idea of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And this helps school-aged children have the right to a free and appropriate education." And I know that our board has staunchly supported that over the years. And we're proud of what we accomplished in the district. Dr. Prince was just a moment ago talking about the graduation rate of our students. Our current graduation rate with students with disabilities is 88%, which is one of the highest in the state of Florida. And our post-school outcomes for students with disabilities continues to exceed the state average for students in higher education or for individuals who are competitively employed. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention and the community. And then fourthly, October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and next Wednesday is Unity Day, October 21st. So everybody's invited to wear orange. I missed it last year, so hopefully I'll get it this year and wear the orange. But we have weekly calendars, we have classroom activities for our students, we have videos in Spanish and English for our teachers to share, to help students to stop bullying and cyberbullying. And we also have a social emotional conversation starters during this time. We had Mr. Gambino here a few moments ago from Tudo Fresco next door, which is a great partner with us. This is National Principals Month, and I really want to commend our principals for the leadership that they have displayed all the years, but especially this year. And so we've done a social media campaign that's highlighting our principals. Our cabinet members each adopted a principal and sent them, we don't have them move in with us, but we just send them thank you notes. And then some of our local restaurants, Tudo Fresco's, Mission Barbecue, Outback Steakhouse, The Ale House, Mo's, Jimmy John's, Longhorn Steakhouse, Selfish Brewing, Thirsty Turtle, St. Lucie Drafthouse, and Frank's Allen Pizza, Frank's, Frankenhouse Pizza are some of the vendors that have given us certificates and free meals and just a way to say, say thank you to our school principals and for the great job that they've done. You've got to have them out there on the front lines, and we've stressed leadership with our principals and very, very proud of them and what they've accomplished. So this month, they get their recognition. Next, as far as for the parents that are there, they should have received the My School, those families that are doing My School, the My School Virtual Option. We've sent out a satisfaction and engagement survey to parents, should have went out yesterday. We're asking for them to turn that in on Friday. And then what we're going to do, and then complete one per fa, per family, if you have siblings in, in there, you'll see in the, there's about, I think, 13 questions that are asked, and it's really, it'll take really less than a couple of moments, minutes to fill out. But we really want to hear back from our parents to see what we're doing well, what we need to work on for the second nine weeks. And so the, this window opened up yesterday, it'll close on Friday. And so we want the parents to, to fill that out and to get that back in. If they did not receive one, all they need to do is contact their school, their, their school and to gain access to the survey. October 29th, this, this is just, I guess, an announcement, but in our high schools, that'll be a half day only for our high schools. What we're doing with those students, that's going to be where we're doing the PSAT, the testing for that. So we're going to allow those My School Virtual students, we'll do a half day for the regular kids in high school only, and they'll go home. And then in the second half of the day, the My School PSAT kids will have an opportunity to come on to campus to take that. That way, we keep the two groups separated because we're rarely, you know, we're really working hard, our schools are doing a really good job with cohorting and keeping students separated and practicing all of the safe behaviors. So that'll be happening. November 3rd is the election day. That's also going to be a holiday for our students and our fa, our staff members as well. A couple of our school sites will be used as voting sites. That gives everybody an opportunity to go out and if they don't vote early, to participate in American democracy and to vote. Friday night, especially Friday night, Treasure Coast High School's football team defeated Vero Beach High School. Vero Beach High School had a 60, they had won 65 games in a row over the years, regular season games, which is quite an accomplishment. And, and Treasure Coast High School and Centennial for the last couple of years have come within a point of defeating them. And that's competition, it's sports, it's all healthy. But congratulations to, to Coach Jones and to Todd, Todd Smith, I think he may, he said he may have put a couple of plays in for the team to run. But what happened is, and those of you that know a little bit about football, Vero Beach scored a touchdown and they were one point behind. Rather than kicking the extra point and to go to overtime, they went for a two-point conversion, Treasure Coast stopped them, and so they stopped that treat. So that's nice. And, and Dr. Prince's son is, is, is the drum major. And, and so that's an exciting time for them. So I wanted to share that. And then in closing out, I just want to give my comments and just Carol Hilsen, 20 years on the school board, five terms, and just say, I've only been able to work with you for the last five years, but what a tremendous honor it has been, your commitment, your compassion to children, especially children that are, that need the most support, the most love and care. I, I appreciate that so much. I appreciate your support for me. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to come here and serve. I've learned so much from you as I have from the school board and just want to, I know we're going to see you again in a couple of weeks, but I just wanted to publicly say, you know, thank you so much for what you've done for this community, and I know you'll continue to do that. She's already volunteered to serve on as many committees as we can get her on. I believe I heard that correct? Yes. But sincere thanks on behalf of the staff, my cabinet's here tonight, we just thank you for your support and what you've done and wish you the best. And, and I know you're going to continue to work over at the preschool and, you know, we've got to get those kids at an early, if we don't get an early, strong foundation, we're in trouble. So just thank you so much for your commitment and what you've meant to this board and to this community for 20 years.
I think, Mr. Superintendent, that's an excellent opportunity for me to segue in since you're already on the hot seat here and just say to you on behalf of the board, what a true honor it has been to work with you for all of these years. So many children you have touched in this district and adults as well, and you've just really been a shining beacon for us. So we have a little something for you.
These are awkward times.
Yes, indeed.
Wonderful little plaque, thanking Carol for her service for the St. Lucie School Board from the years 2000 to 2020. Great love and admiration.
It really is tough for us to get used to this new normal because typically we would hug and just have, you know, a real good time, but you just have to feel it virtually from us, just as in our Star Awards, folks, as well. So before we leave the superintendent's reports, let me read into the minutes our COVID situation, and I'll entertain a motion at the end of that. "To confirm, approve, and ratify all of the superintendent's actions taken during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the period covered by his report and authorizing the superintendent's continuation of such action for so long as the governor's emergency declaration remains in effect." Do I have a motion, board members, to accept his report? Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Second by Dr. Mills. Any conversation? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Harold, do you have a report for us tonight? Thank you. Okay, we will move then to our school board member reports. Dr. Mills can begin with you.
Firstly, I want to thank all of the staff, I want to thank our district staff, Mr. Gent, and all of our area directors and so forth on the, the great work that you have done regarding, since the beginning of school. I realize how challenging it is for you to deal with two different types of schools at one time. And you, you are doing a very good job. We've had, we have had cases, but we haven't, of COVID, but we have not had what we could have had without your diligence in that area. So I want to let you know how much I'm appreciative of that. Also, it's incredible with Dr. Wiles and her staff, and I think you said Bill Thomason as well, but whoever got that grant, you know, that award for $500,000, a half a million dollars, my goodness, we've got some real champions on our district. And just want to acknowledge that. Also, the equity report, Dr. Prince, we are moving in the right direction. You did a wonderful presentation on it. I'm still pretty concerned about our black males and the equity of having, you know, 30% white, 30% black, and the Hispanic, 30% Hispanic being of our school. I, I want to see more equity somehow, even more than what we've done. So, but I do appreciate that, giving us that report, and I'm sure it helped to highlight a lot of people who are listening. Tudi Frisco, thank you, Joey, for your donation. And last but not least, I wanted to say something about my good friend Carol Hilsen. I'm getting ready to cry. Carol Hilsen, in 2010, when I came on this board, accepted and received me with open arms. I was the first black female to serve on this school board. And she just engulfed me completely and, and really mentored me. So I tried my best to talk her out of leaving, but I just couldn't do it. So I guess it's time for her to go now. But I appreciate what you've done, Carol, I appreciate how you accepted and brought me in and made me feel very comfortable. Because what we don't understand is when we don't have that equilibrium in the place, you start to, if you don't, if others do not cause the one that's different, and the only difference I am is the color of my skin. But if you don't have that, and you're like, it'd be, it'd be different if it was all blacks and one white. We need to welcome people and make people feel like they are, they're where they're supposed to be at. Otherwise, it doesn't make a difference. And when I say that, I think about our children as well. Our children need to see their own reflections as much as possible. And we need to do something about having black male leadership even more so in this district so that those little black boys can look up there and see someone that looks like them. And I'm sure you all understand that. But I just wanted to say with Carol, I'm going to miss you dearly. And, you know, when you do good and you're kind to others, they don't forget it. Thank you for your service, and I'm going to, I'm going to miss you. That's my girlfriend right there, as y'all can see. My friend girl, they say here, friend girl.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Hensley?
Yes. As you know, this is 30th anniversary of the Children's Services Council. Unfortunately, the big event that we had planned, of course, did not happen. So some of you have received t-shirts as a thank you for your commitment to the children in St. Lucie County. Since this inception, we have actually moved the needle on almost every indicator. When we did the study before it went on the ballot, we were actually even with two of the 17 indicators in the state for best practices for children. We are now leading the state in almost every category. That is the, the result of the commitment of this community to the children of this community. Over time, it has made a significant difference. Also, the Transportation Planning Organization, we are working on our 2045 plan. Seems like a long time out, but you know, it takes 20 years to do a bridge and 15 years to do a road. So the big focus of our discussion has been on safe, safe passage of students to schools. And so some of the priorities in our multimodal will be on sidewalks and appropriate bike paths. It's still time for you as a public to have input into those priorities. If you wish, you can go on to the Transportation Planning Organization website and give your input. Also, the Culture Alliance has taken a step forward to be more inclusive and pushing more arts for the students and culture for the students and the St. Lucie County as a whole. We had an event last week, we will have another one coming up, but we have a plan to increase that. Families of the Treasure Coast moved into different headquarters October the 1st. Because of the savings with the, with that move, we will be able to hire a, a mental health worker to help with the warm line for the parents who are in stress and their children, so that's a good move. And by the way, this is not Ms. Hilsen's last meeting. She will be here at our next meeting. And Carol and I, as some of you may know, have been through some very significant battles over the years. And we have scars to prove them. But what we did is we decided we always had to do what was right for all children and this, we had to just get our way through it. So I'm very proud of the accomplishments that she helped us achieve.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Mr. Ingersoll, do you have any words of wisdom to share with us tonight?
I don't know if there were to rest, but I have words to share.
All right.
First off, I want to thank the superintendent for allowing us to have sports in this county. I would sit down and see what Paul made into their sports programs, and I'm just cringing. My kids got the opportunity to play sports, volleyball, soccer, cross-country, and football. And over the summer, I made fun of them because of, Vero Beach was out there practicing every day. And I'm just so proud of Treasure Coast and what they accomplished. I know the superintendent, superintendent said something, but, but just to put that win in our column, and St. Lucie County did it, specifically Treasure Coast, we're just, just extra proud. The other thing is, I'm a little disappointed with the state, you know, obviously, we're playing in Cluiston tonight, and we're the number one ranked team, and I just a little disappointed in how the state is doing it. And if this is the state, the way the state is going to run the, the sports program, I'm a little concerned what's going to happen in education. If they're just going to draw names out of a hat for teams to play wherever, it, it, it's disheartening. For my team, it's no big deal, but for a powerhouse like Central High School and girls' volleyball, a state-ranked team, I think it's a farce what we have to do. And it, it strips the girls of all their accolades and winning, the point of going out and playing hard to win for a, a certain area. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just concerned. But, but on a brighter note, I'm, I'm very excited of what we're doing educationally. I'm glad Dr. Prince brought out the equity report, I was able to hear half of it. And, and on a sad note, well, not a sad note, but a happy note, I want to thank Carol Hilsen for all her years of service, just like Dr. Mills, she, she mentored most of us and accepted us, even, even when we were the odd person out. Carol, I'm going to miss you, I'm going to miss our times driving to Tampa together, hearing the viewpoints of, hearing the way, hearing the way that you think and, and how you care for children is just, is just special. And how she cares for the preschoolers of our, our community and how she cares for everybody in our community is just amazing. So Carol, I thank you for, for all your help and what you've done for me and my family and also what you did for our community. I really do appreciate you. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, and good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Ms. Hilsen, it's only fitting to save you to have the final word tonight.
Yes, there's so many words. I'm thinking back to Delaware Avenue and Dan Harrell swearing me in and my knees knocked together since I knew little about, about anything, actually. Having been a preschool director prepared me in a lot of ways, but there was certainly a lot to learn. But Donna, Dr. Mills, as you said, you had a mentor and Catherine was there and Dan was always there. Chris Harrison's one of the most amazing people in the school board and doesn't get enough recognition. Our executive secretary, she's the one that mentors us in. But I, you know, they say you stand on the shoulders of giants. And Dr. Samuel Gaines, Dr. Gaines, when I came in, was kind of that person that would take me into his office and say, now sit down and calm down, and I'm going to tell you how to work this through, when I would get upset about things in the community. And, and he just, he has so much wisdom, he has so much wisdom and goodness in him. And he, and he's a devout believer in Jesus Christ. And of course, many of you know, I've worked in community Methodist for community Methodist for 32 years as a preschool director. And that's kind of my language of love, is working in a church and doing ministry, that sometimes I'm limited in the public and the school board and the secular world, and I can do different things in a church. I can do those things for the neediest of my families, and it is so rewarding. It's unbelievable. And my work is not done in the community. I mean, I'm going to continue. I want to be a friend of the school board. I want to continue to work at the church as long as I'm physically able to work with children. But I tell you, Mr. Gent, you're one reason it's hard for me to go, because you're an exceptional person, as each of the board members are, and have been so good and so kind, and all the staff. It's never really about us. It's about the children. And I feel like that we stay very focused about, our prime directive is about the safety and security of the children of St. Lucie County. And so I have little time for people that don't put children first. And as Catherine spoke about some of our scars, and one of our greatest scars to me, Catherine and I both had to get security in our homes when we did the Get Real About AIDS curriculum in the school system, because I didn't think it was right for children to die because they didn't know about AIDS and they weren't educated. And it was never, it was never about sex. It was about health and safety of children. And so we fought that battle in such a way that I received letters threatening to kill me, because at the time, a lot of community members thought it was about people of color, and they thought it was about people of alternative lifestyles. And really, it was about all people. And so the ugliness and the nastiness came out in such a powerful, sad way. People went so far as to send condemning letters to both of our pastors, threatening us that we shouldn't even be allowed to be in the church and hold positions. So that was a time, and I was actually the chairperson, and it was a very frightening time, you know, when people threaten your life because of your belief system. But I believe when you do the right thing, God rewards you. And I think we did good work. And I think we're going to continue, and the school board, with or without me, will continue to do what's right, because the leadership is exceptional. And each of these board members has given so much of themselves. But I'm not going to go away completely. I'm just not going to be on the board anymore. And again, I thank all the staff and all. I have to say this, the staff make us look good. We're good people. We're good board members. But having a good superintendent and a good staff helps to make board members look effective and confident in what we do. So we believe what they tell us. Their figures check out, their facts check out, because they speak truth to us. And if they didn't speak truth, we would know it. So I thank the community, again, it's not about me, it's about the kids. And as long as we keep that attitude, I feel that this school board will continue to move forward in the direction that our leaders are sending us. So thank you so much. I appreciate everything.
I'm glad you're here.
I just want to acknowledge the parents of Progressive Education. I've seen several of you in the community, and I want to acknowledge your organization. You are doing a fine work. And as you continue to grow and continue to help us help our communities and our children, we will all be successful as a result. And so I'm very grateful to see parents out here tonight and from that, parents of Progressive Education. Thank you. We know it's a challenge for you, because many of you have already called me and said, you know, it's too, our board meetings are too early. You know, many of you are getting off from work and other things. So I appreciate the effort that you're making. Thank you for coming.
That does move us to the end of our meeting.